Hi. We're going right into it?
Okay.
Okay, I've got 5:30.
Okay.
Why is James?
Good to go? Okay, all right, good evening, welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting of June 9, 2020. This meeting is called to order. Roll call is not necessary, all members are present, if you would take note of that, please. Our next two items on our agenda are invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation is going to be delivered tonight by Mr. James Diebler. James, if you'd come up to the podium, please, and if anyone's weren't ahead, if you'd please remove it, and then remain standing afterwards for our Pledge of Allegiance, thank you.
Sorry, start over again. Dear heavenly Father, Lord hear my prayer, Lord hear my prayer, Lord hear my prayer. Please keep the city of Glendale safe from from robberies, and please keep the city more safer with cops. And please help the city to make it through COVID-19. I'll follow you in heaven, hallowed be thy name, the kingdom come will be done, if it is in heaven. Give us a day, dear bread, give us all the trespassers trespassing against us. There is no temptation or desire as an evil, God's kingdom by God forever. Name the Father, Son, and Spirit, amen.
Thank you, James.
Walken.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and we do have some special circumstances with this meeting here instead of our chambers. Staff has set up cameras next door in the room with video, so we can actually see the members next door on our screen, as you can see us on your screen. We just want to make sure that everybody understands what's going on, they can see what's happening, and it's in real time. With that said, could I get, well, the next on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes, councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve the May 26, 2020 voting meeting?
Mayor?
Mr. Turner.
I move we approve the May 26, 2020 voting meeting minutes.
I have a motion, Councilmember Turner, second, Councilmember Clark, to approve the minutes, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Do you have what that motion carries? Our consent agenda and consent resolutions will now move on to just that. Items two through 15, on a consent agenda of a routine nature, or they've been previously studied by the City Council at workshops, that workshop session, they are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Ms. Bauer, will you please read the consent resolutions, items 13 through 15, by number and title?
Item 13, resolution number R-20-63, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the local community grant, grant ID 60252051, in the approximate amount of $500 from Walmart for Glendale Police Department Community Action Team Program expenses on behalf of the Glendale Police Department. Item 14, resolution number R-20-64, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with Tolleson Union High School, District Number 214, for school resource officer at Copper Canyon High School during the 2020-21 school year. Item 15, resolution number R-20-65, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Phoenix, FAIN Number AZ-2020-015-00, for acceptance and expenditure of Federal Transit Administration grant funding for transit operating expenses. That concludes the consent resolutions.
All right, thank you. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve consent agenda items two through 12, and consent resolutions 13, 14, and 15.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Hughes, second, Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve any discussion? Or any discussion? No. To approve, tough day today. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, passes unanimous, very good. Okay, we're moving on to bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, can you please read item 16 into the record for us, please?
Authorization to enter into an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona for administration of the city's self-insured employee medical benefits plan.
Okay, are there any speaker cards? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the described agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Turner, second, Councilmember Oldama, to approve the recommended action, is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote? Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimously. Ms. Bauer, would you read item 17 into the record for us, please?
Authorization to enter into an agreement with Valley Schools Employee Benefits Group for
I will be voting no on this item and the following item. These are new RFPs that were issued and accepted for both of these agreements, but I would note that we have used the same provider for the previous five years, and now we're going into another five-year agreement with the same vendors, and I don't see how that benefits the city. We don't know what financial conditions will be a year from now, or two years from now. So based upon the fact that they're five-year contracts, and that we will have used the same vendors, once these agreements are approved for 10 years, doesn't make much sense to me, so I will be voting no.
Okay, but you did second that.
No, I did not.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Oldama, second, Councilmember Tomachoff, will conduct a roll call vote, Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item number 18 for us, please?
Award of bid number 20-21, authorization to enter into an agreement for medical direction consultant services with Redline Emergency Voice, Inc.
Speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay, councilmembers, any questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 18, please?
Yes, Mayor, I move approval of the award of bid 20-21, authorization to enter into an agreement with, for medical direction consultant services with Redline Emergency Voice, Inc.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Tomachoff, second, Councilmember Hugh, to approve the recommended action, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you read item 19 into the record, please?
Award of request for proposal 20-25, authorization to enter into an agreement with Hempleman Auto Parts Company, Inc., doing business as Napa Auto Parts for onsite automotive and heavy equipment parts operation, and to ratify expenditures.
Okay, speaker cards?
No, sir.
Councilmembers, any questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 19? Anybody?
I move.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we award the request for proposal 20-25, authorization to enter into an agreement with Hempleman Auto Parts.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Clark, second, Councilmember Hugh, to approve the recommended action, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember, item number 20 into the record, please.
Award of RFP 20-32, and authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Brightview Landscape Services, Inc., for the Skunk Creek Linear Park vegetation maintenance and clearing.
Do we have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions on these items? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 20?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the described professional services agreement with Brightview Landscaping Services.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Turner, second, Councilmember Clark, to approve the recommended action, any discussion on
Being located along the west side of Loop 303 and Glendale Avenue east of Cotton Lane.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide staff report tonight on both action items number 21 and 22 on your agenda is our interim development services director, Lisa Collins.
Oh, there he is. Thank you, Mr. Phelps, Mayor, and members of the council. Glendale 303 is a hearing on a blank petition, so there's no action required this evening. It is a portion of AN 219. So this is located along Glendale Avenue and the Loop 303, where you can see here west of City Hall. So the council has seen this case previously, on April 28, you approved a pre-annexation development agreement that did allow the property owner to proceed with infrastructure needs. So as required by state law, a blank petition was filed May 12, and there's a 30-day wait period, the last 10 days of that 30-day wait period, the council's required to have a public hearing, so that brings us to this evening, June 9, and again, there is no action required. The refresher, this annexation request is 103 acres, it is the west side of the Loop 303 at the northeast corner of Glendale Avenue and Cotton Lane. So these are the recent annexations in process, and Glendale 303 is highlighted. A little closer view of that showing the extent of the activity along the Loop 303. So the noise contours on this graphic show the, all of the projects that are, that have been before you, and the associated noise contours, as well as Glendale 303, and that is shown as being outside of the noise contours. Here is a vicinity map showing the surrounding properties, Maricopa County, agricultural vacant land to the north, and to the west, to the south is the city of Glendale, in the east is the Loop 303. So our general plan does identify this as mixed use. In the county, this is currently zoned IND 2, so the like zoning for the city of Glendale would be a combination of industrial and commercial, so a PAD classification would be provided if the annexation is approved by the city council. So again, as required by state statute, the blank petition was filed, which leads us to the hearing this evening, again, there's no action required after this evening, the property owners are able to sign the petition, and at that point, we'll schedule a hearing for the city council, and you'll have the option to annex the land, if it's annexed, 30 days later, it will become part of the city of Glendale. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I want to clarify, I have on here, public hearing required, I didn't think that we did, so we're not doing a public hearing tonight, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, no, there is, a blank petitions do require a public hearing.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, public hearing is now open on item 21, do we have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
No speaker cards, anyone wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, public hearing is now closed, no motion is necessary, thank you. Item 22, please?
Ordinance number O-20-36, an ordinance of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, state of Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter 4, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes, and its amendments by annexing certain territory located at the southwest corner of Northern Avenue and North 107th Avenue of the city of Glendale, consisting of approximately 10 acres, and to be known as Annexation Area Number 206, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Northern one oh seven, Annexation AN two oh six is an adoption for this evening. So this is located, as you see on the vicinity map, City Hall is noted in the yellow star. To the west of that is Northern one oh seven. So the council has seen this previously. It was introduced at a workshop and described as a retail and multifamily residential. The council provided consensus to move forward with the annexation process. Based on that, the council did have a public hearing on April fourteenth on the blank petitions. And so that leads us to this evening, the adoption of Northern one oh seven. Again, this is a ten-acre vacant parcel located at one hundred and seventh Avenue and Northern, and the proposal, again, is for multifamily residential and commercial uses. You see on the vicinity aerial, to the north is the city of Peoria, west is Maricopa County Residential, south is Maricopa County Residential. Both of those are fully developed, and east is the city of Glendale. So again, recent annexations that are in process are shown in this graphic. This graphic shows a close-up of what's happening in the area of one oh seven and Northern. So the Glendale Envision general plan does show this as residential land use. However, in the county, this is zoned CS commercial, so when this is annexed into the city, it would come into the city as commercial property. And again, the request is to do commercial and residential. So, and in your packet, you have a range of fiscal impacts and assumptions. Those assumptions look at commercial and residential or commercial only. This Northern one oh seven planned area development did go before the Planning Commission, and on May seventh, it was approved. And it was approved with commercial and residential development. And this is scheduled for your June twenty-third city council meeting, the zoning action is. So the range of fiscal impacts, as you saw in your packet, commercial and residential are the lowest range. Commercial only is the highest. However, I will note that our general plan does show this as residential. The county shows it as commercial, so a combination of the two seems most appropriate, and considering the fact that there is, this is surrounded by residential. However, it is on a corner that one would assume commercial would be suitable for. So again, here are the assumptions. There's an annual net benefit range shown here from one hundred and twenty thousand dollars approximately to two hundred and ninety-two thousand. Again, because this would be developed as residential and commercial, we're going to see the low end of that range. And then the one-time revenues are shown here. The residential and commercial does produce a greater one-time revenue. So we're looking at four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for a one-time revenue for this project. Again, as required by state statute, a blank petition was filed. You held a public hearing on April fourteenth. In accordance with that statute, the property owner's signatures were obtained, which brings us to the hearing this evening, June ninth, twenty twenty, to consider the adoption of the annexation. If it's approved by the council in thirty days, this will be brought into the city of Glendale. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, speaker cards?
No, sir.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for ordinance zero two zero dash thirty-six, item number twenty-two?
Yes, Mayor. I move we adopt ordinance number O two zero dash three six. Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote? Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimous. Moving on to ordinances. Ms. Bauer, would you please introduce item twenty-three or ordinance number zero two zero dash three seven?
Ordinance number O twenty dash thirty-seven, an ordinance of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing cash and appropriation balance transfers between budget items in the adopted fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is Lisette Camacho, our Director of Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item is to adopt an ordinance approving fiscal year twenty twenty budget amendments. The city of Glendale's FY twenty total budget appropriation across all funds remains unchanged with this action. Lines one through three of the appropriation transfers relate to the Motorola Computer-Aided Dispatch Records Management System project. Line four is a transfer of appropriation to Heroes Park Library-
Councilmember Clark, second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Did I call you?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimous. I was going to say, I thought I missed you there. Moving on to resolutions. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item twenty-four, Resolution R twenty dash sixty-six, please?
Resolution number R twenty dash sixty-six, a resolution of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, proposes a franchise agreement between the city of Glendale and Epcor Water, Arizona, Inc., to the qualified electors of the city of Glendale for their approval or rejection at the next primary election.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is Chief Capitol Improvement Officer, Don Bessler.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, Mayor, members of council. Don Bessler. This item is in furtherance of two recent actions, or a recent action and a recent presentation that staff made to council. At your May twenty-sixth workshop, we presented to you the notion and the idea of a furtherance of a franchise agreement with Epcor Water, Arizona, Inc. to serve the area west of one hundred and fifteenth Avenue out in the western Glendale. That evening at your voting meeting, the council made a determination that it was advantageous to forward that item to the voters for their consideration. This item is the next piece of that effort. So tonight would be the actual ballot language that the city clerk, if approved by council, the city clerk would forward to the county so that it could be included in the next general election. We would call attention to, and ask for your indulgence, that we did mistype the word. We said primary election. It's actually the November third general election. That's the only substantive thing that's different, so we would ask your indulgence as you consider this tonight. Thank you.
All right, questions? No questions. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay, so item twenty-four is going to need a motion to approve an amendment from primary to general election. Is there a motion?
Mayor. I motion to amend item number twenty-four, Resolution R twenty dash sixty-six, to read as follows. Resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, proposes a franchise agreement between the city of Glendale and Epcor Water, Arizona, Inc. to the qualified electors of the city of Glendale for their approval or rejection at the next general election.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries.
Mayor, I now move that we approve item number twenty-four.
As amended.
As amended.
Yes, as amended.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Clark to approve the recommended action as amended. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item twenty-five, Resolution number R twenty dash six seven?
Resolution number R twenty dash sixty-seven, a resolution of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a pre-annexation development agreement with Allen Ranches LLC to facilitate the annexation and development of properties within the Loop three oh three corridor and directing that the city clerk record any and all necessary documents.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is Randy Huggins, our Economic Development Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council. This is a request for city council to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a pre-annexation development agreement, or PADA, between the city of Glendale and Allen Ranches LLC. Allen Ranches is an eight hundred and sixty-five acre property that, when developed, is planned to include six hundred and fifteen acres of industrial and two hundred and fifty acres of single-family homes. The six hundred and fifteen acres of industrial park is planned to include between nine and eleven million square feet of new Class A structures, designed to meet the needs of modern logistics, high-tech manufacturing, and e-commerce companies. As part of this agreement, Allen Ranches will build and pay for all roadway improvements internal to and adjacent to the Allen Ranch development. This includes miles of multi-lane roadway, multiple traffic signals adjacent to the property, which will fulfill the transportation development impact fee asterix on the current council-approved DIF fee schedule. All impact fees will be paid in accordance with the council-approved development impact fee schedule, including parks, library, police, and fire. This PADA will require the property owner to request annexation from the city council prior to additional entitlement actions in the county and prior to any development of the property. It does not require council to annex, leaving annexation at the discretion of city council. Just to be clear, the annexation and zoning case will be heard on June twenty-third of this month. This PAD has no direct expense to the city for this action. Staff recommends approval of this PADA, which provides the ability to be responsive in a competitive market for the purpose of securing development within the city of Glendale that otherwise would not occur. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Huggins. Council, any questions? Okay, I do have a speaker card from Janet DeLong. She's in the room next door. She's a Waddell resident, and she is opposing this, but she does not wish to speak, so for the record, I just wanted to read that. So I have no other speaker cards. Is there a motion on Resolution R twenty dash sixty-seven, item number twenty-five?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt Resolution number R twenty dash sixty-seven.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, a second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimous. Moving on to item twenty-six. Ms. Bauer.
Resolution number R twenty dash sixty-eight, a resolution of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting the final budget of the amounts required for the public expense for the city of Glendale for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, setting forth the revenue and the amount to be raised by direct property taxation, and adopting the city council's final, financial policies.
Mayor, members of the council, prior to the presentation by staff, I just want to personally reach out and to thank the mayor and the council for the flexibility you provided the staff over the last couple of months. As you are aware, we were very close to finalizing a budget towards the end of February, and then we all kind of got turned upside down with the COVID nineteen and the shelter in place, which really required a major pivot, not only of our staff, but really of the council. And we appreciate the flexibility in streamlining some of the workshops and some of the information. It really provided a great value to our team. That being said, I want to really call out, then, all the extra work that was put in by Lisette Camacho and our budget and finance team, and Amy Lindsay, our budget administrator. This extra amount of work was unprecedented for this type of, of a process, and I just want to say, great job on, on the presentation. And with that, I'd like to turn over to Lisette Camacho for the, for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mayor, members of the council, this item is to review the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one final budget, conduct a public hearing on the final budget, and convene a special meeting to adopt the resolution formally approving the final operating capital debt service and contingency appropriation budget. The fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget request totals seven hundred and forty-seven million, including an operating budget of four hundred and forty-four million, a capital improvement budget of a hundred and seventy-five million, a debt service budget of eighty-seven million, and a contingency appropriation of forty-one million. There is one change in the exhibits on Exhibit G, which is the full-time, the FTE, Full-Time Employees and Personnel Compensation Exhibit. General fund total FTE increased by one to one thousand two hundred and sixty point five. We had mistakenly left out the FTE for the Parks and Rec Coordinator for the after-school programming at city-owned facilities. The total budget did not change, and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Hearing none. I have no speaker cards.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
Would like to just acknowledge one publicly. As you recall, originally before, as we were looking at our budget, we had discussed the, the opportunity to delay our non-represented employees, the one and a half percent COLA that we have in the budget and the performance pay. And so in light of, of recent economic information and what, and just the status we're at, we're now going to be recommending that we go ahead and implement, starting effective July first, a one and a half percent COLA to all city employees, and for those who meet and or exceed standards via a performance review, that we would do a one percent performance pay. Again, we had had discussions. We'd wait and discuss this with the council in, in January. Unless you would prefer to keep it in that way, I just want to go and put it on record publicly that our intention would be to, to go ahead and go forward with our employees, starting on July first.
Very good. Can I get a motion for Resolution R twenty dash sixty-eight, item twenty-six?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a few words, if I may, please.
Excuse me, Mayor, members of the council, we need to do a public hearing.
Okay, well.
Mayor, you actually need to, like, pause this meeting, convene a special meeting, and then go back before you can-
No.
Our apologies, that's part of the state law. Do you want to reread that section, Lisette?
Okay, do I?
Mayor, members of the council, this item is to review the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one final budget, conduct a public hearing on the final budget, and convene a special meeting to adopt the resolution formally approving the final operating capital debt service and contingency appropriation budget.
Okay.
Mayor, so in the past, what you've done is just conducted the public hearing first, and then when the public hearing is done, you convene the special meeting to-
Okay, well, let's do one thing at a time, okay?
Got it.
So, okay, public hearing is now open. Any comments on the public hearing?
No, sir.
No comments, no speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay, so I'm closing the public meeting.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. Now you need to convene a special meeting. That's like, you don't have to-
Do we need to recess this meeting first?
No, you do not have to recess the other meeting. You just convene a special meeting, adopt the resolution, and then close the special meeting.
Way too much going on here. Okay, we're convening a special meeting.
To adopt the, the budget, or adopt the resolution.
To adopt the resolution. There we go. Okay. So where does it go from here? Back to Lisette?
No, we've done the presentation. You just need to get a motion from the floor, I believe, to adopt the-
All right, so let's, let's go ahead and ask for a motion.
Mayor, I have a few comments.
Let's do the motion for-
All right. Motion to approve item number twenty-six, Resolution number R twenty dash sixty-eight.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Oldama, a second from Councilmember Clark. Now. Questions?
Yeah, I just want to echo the sentiments of our city manager. But thank you for all the work you did to continue the budget through the COVID crisis. I appreciate you, and I appreciate your team, everyone that partook in that. I also want to take a minute to thank our community for accommodating this modification of our meeting schedules that didn't allow you to come in but did allow you to participate. It means a lot to me, and I'm sure it means a lot to others here, your patience with us. So with that said, and good news on the, the increase, I vote, I motion to approve, and I vote aye.
We haven't called-
Oh, we're not in there yet, right?
We haven't got there yet.
Motion to approve Resolution number R twenty dash sixty-eight.
Second.
Okay, I have your motion and your second. Any other discussion? Okay, so now we're going to go ahead and go back to the roll call. Correct? Okay, Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say I'm particularly pleased that we are able to provide the cost of living and merit increases starting July one. Appreciate the council. Appreciate the council's support for that, and the help from the federal government and the governor that make it all possible. And with that, I vote aye.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. So, are we going to adjourn the special? Okay, so adjourning the special, going back into now, item 26?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Item 27, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're done with 27.
Item 27.
Resolution Number R-20-69, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, ordering and calling a special election to be held on November 3rd, 2020, in and for the city of Glendale, Arizona, to submit to the qualified electors thereof questions of selling and issuing bonds payable from secondary ad valorem property taxes.
I wasn't quite ready for you to finish. Wait past me, I thought you were going to be here. Mr. Phelps.
Mayor, members of the council here provide staff report is Lizette Camacho.
Mayor, members of the council, this item is to adopt a resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held on November 3rd, 2020, for additional general obligation bond voter authorization. I will go through the specific ballot language. We presented the draft ballot language for council consideration this morning. We do have some amendments to the landfill and the Parks and Recreation ballot language. For the landfill, the principal amount did not change, it is $9.9 million. We did create two new bullet points, so I'll begin from the top and then read the two bullet points. It says, "Shall the city of Glendale, Arizona, the city be authorized to incur indebtedness in the total principal amount of not to exceed $9.9 million by the issuance and sale of bonds of the city for the purpose of providing funds for landfill projects, including but not limited to the following: planning, acquiring, designing, constructing, extending, and improving landfill facilities, and improving and extending the landfill." Mayor, members of the council, we did not add the reference to the North Cell because it's not a defined, it's not a legally defined term, there is no boundaries, and we did check Ms. Waitenko on the specific language for the landfill. Okay, moving on to the Parks and Recreation. The Parks and Recreation, the first bullet point is now amended to read, "Planning, constructing, improving, renovating, and remodeling existing Parks and Recreation facilities within the existing city park boundaries." And moving on to the next bullet, so it would say, "And furnishing and equipping existing Parks and Recreation facilities within the city, including lighting, irrigation, structures, and restrooms." In the paragraph below it, we are also removing this line, "Appertinances and land therefore by purchase or any other method of acquisition." So that sentence will be removed.
Mayor, do you have that printed or anything? I'm a little bit confused.
Me too.
I'm trying to follow along, but I'm a little bit confused.
Would I be able to maybe put it up on the screen?
Put it up on the screen, yeah, that would help me. I don't know about anybody else.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor, members of the council, let me scroll up to show you. It states, "Planning, constructing, improving, renovating, remodeling, and remodeling existing Parks and Recreation facilities within existing city park boundaries, and furnishing and equipping existing Parks and Recreation facilities within the city, including lighting, irrigation, structures, and restrooms."
Thank you, that helped.
The meeting today, there was a discussion on removing the references to land or purchase of land. So, we remove this sentence right here, "Appertinances and land therefore by purchase of any other method of acquisition."
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I hate to bring this up after we've had all that discussion all day long about this, but there may be opportunities in the future to purchase additional land around existing parks that we may require for public parking and be able to charge a fee for. I hate to remove our ability to acquire additional land for parking purposes. And from what I'm reading now, that is no longer possible. I would like to have a little bit of more discussion regarding that issue.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Clark.
Is, Mayor, if I might...
Go ahead.
Is there, is there any way, maybe we could say, instead of striking "Appertinances and land therefore by purchase" or "Any other method of acquisition," and put in "Land as may be required for additional parking," and leave that in, that much in?
Parking.
Mayor.
Yeah, hold on, I, but why would you limit yourself to that?
I don't know.
Because there's a whole, there's a whole litany of things that could come up that could be critically important.
You're, you're right, but I was just thinking, I was narrowly thinking just in terms of parking, but you're right, there could be a whole litany of issues that come up.
Maybe we should just eliminate the purchasing part. Just not put in there that at all.
Or just, instead of striking that, just leave it in.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
After our lengthy discussion today, I thought we made it pretty clear that we wanted to take the money that we're doing this for to fix our parks. Now, if a park needs more parking, then maybe we need to take a little piece of the park and turn it into parking, but not go out and buy more land to do that. I mean, I think it's, we should just follow the recommendations here and move forward. The money we're doing, what we're doing here is we're upgrading and improving our parks. And yes, parking is part of that, but I think we should do that within the park boundaries that are already there. So if we have a park that there's no parking, and it's a big park, then it's got room to build a small parking stall there. And we should take a piece of the park and make it part of the parking, but not go out and try to buy additional land. And the chances of finding additional land next to most of the parks, other than Heroes, perhaps, it's not going to be there anyway. There's no, no land near any of the parks in my district that I'm aware of that we would be able to buy. So, I think we need to leave it at the original language that is recommended here. And we made it very clear today, we don't want to send a message to the public that we're looking at expanding our parks or building, purchasing land. We want to make sure they understand this is for upgrading and improving our current existing parks. And so I think we should leave it as it is. Thank you.
Let me, let me throw just one thought out there, and I understand what you're saying, and you're probably right, there probably isn't any land that would be affordable, but what if? What if, what if somebody's home burnt down, and we had the opportunity to pick up that small lot that might make a parking lot? You know, why would you limit yourself, is all I'm saying.
Mayor, may I answer that?
I'm just, I'm just simply trying to throw it out there as a thought.
Well, can I answer that?
Well, certainly you can.
Okay. I mean, I understand your sentiment, but there's some, we could talk all night long about the what ifs. We can't do that. If, if there's a piece of property comes up, our city manager will get creative and he'll find some money for us to buy it if we really think it's necessary. I don't think we need to nitpick this language because something might happen in the future. I think this is what we want to do, we just move forward and we do it. We fix our parks as they are and their existing boundaries.
Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I agree completely with Vice Mayor Melner. This, this money is not going to go anywhere near as far as I think people are thinking it's going to go. We have, we saw this, we saw the presentation today, we are less than half of the next, we are a dismal last place in our park spending. We've got a lot of work to do, and, you know, if we were to come upon, I agree, if it's a big park, we could use some of the park to build a parking lot, and if it's not, there's probably no land to purchase. But I think we need to, we got to get this passed by the voters, too. So we need to make sure it's clear that what we want to do is provide a better amenity, a nicer park, a better community for the residents to live here, that live here. And I do think that one of the reasons parks don't have big parking lots is because they want them to be community parks. Otherwise, you start drawing people in from outside the community, there's more wear and tear and all of that. So, I agree, I think we should stick to the plan. Out of the $87 million, we've, we're committing $46 million, a little over $46 million to finish Heroes Park. That leaves just over $40 million for all the things all the other parks in the city need. So, I agree with Vice Mayor, sorry, Melner, that we stick to the plan and we improve the parks, deliver Heroes Park like we've agreed to do, and if we come upon a situation where we can acquire a piece of property and do a parking lot, we will be able to find a way to do it.
Yeah, I share the same. I agree with the two councilmembers, leave it as is, and we can always use other funds to, for land acquisition, we're not, doesn't tie our hands to do that. So, I agree, use the money for what its intended purposes.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Ms. Camacho, could you scroll up a little bit so we could see the first part there? Thank you. To me, the key recommendation from the Bond Committee, and I think it's what we all agreed on and are still with, is that this is for existing parks. That's what we're trying to deal with. We're not looking to go out and buy new parks and all of that. We do still have some authorized bonds, authorized money that, authorized bonding that we could use if we had to do some acquisition that isn't limited to new, or isn't limited to existing, like this should be, based on their recommendation. I think that's what we want to tell the voters, is we're looking for authorization to bond for money to improve the parks that we currently have, and importantly, to, to complete the plans that are in place. And I'll put it, I guess, on the record now, it's my understanding of the council that facilities that are planned but not yet built in a, in a park are part of planning and constructing that park. So if they're already in our plans to put a building, a building or facility in that hasn't, doesn't exist right now, it's still part of this plan, it goes in an existing park. This isn't to go out and expand our park system and take on more responsibility, it's to complete the responsibility that we've already accepted and made to our residents. So, I can live with the language as it is.
Mayor, I would just say in closing that I don't disagree with the sentiments that are expressed, other than to say that I have no foreseeable plans of acquiring anything anywhere within the city. I just hate to see us close the door on an option should it become available, for us to do something creative and perhaps revenue generating. That was my only intent, but I see that there is not majority support, so I'm not, I will not move further on the issue.
Okay, we have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, the only other change is on the streets, we had parking on the title, so we are removing the parking reference.
Okay, can I get a motion for Resolution R-20-69, item 27?
Yeah, I want to clarify, can I make the motion as amended with what's on the screen, or do I have to, how do I do that, Mr. Bailey?
Mayor and council, I'd ask that you just make the motion as amended on the screen, and we can do that all in one motion then.
Okay, all right. I move that we adopt Resolution R-20-69 with, as amended on the screen.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Yeah, hold on a second. Councilmember Aldama, turn your microphone on and say that again. How do you vote?
Aye.
Perfect. Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote.
Go ahead.
I think on behalf of everybody here, I'd like to express our gratitude to the members of our Bond Committee that have come forward with these recommendations, and of course to the staff that's supported them and answered their questions. I think we ended up with an excellent committee and excellent recommendations, and with that I vote aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
I'd like to explain my vote, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, again, as I stated earlier in our workshop, most of the time when the public votes on a bond, they think that their property taxes are going to go up. I think this entire council has made it very clear that we do not intend to do that, that the, we have a policy in place that as we sell these bonds, that prior bonds that are paid off will always keep the property taxes at the same level. And I think that's really important, that the entire public understands that this bond, even though it's a lot of money, it will not raise your property taxes. It will keep, will sell the bonds in such a fashion, and the Finance Department has told us that they could put a plan together to avoid any increase in the tax levies on the property. And I think that's really important for this council, and we all agree with it. And with that, I vote aye.
Thank you. Chair votes aye, the motion carries. New business now, moving on. Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item 28, please?
Authorization to enter into a franchise agreement with Epcor Water, Arizona, Inc. for water and wastewater services.
Mayor, members of the council here provide staff report is Don Bessler, Chief Capital Improvement Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mayor, councilmembers, Don Bessler with Engineering. As we spoke to the last several meetings and earlier tonight, this is in furtherance of a formal franchise agreement with Epcor Water, Arizona, Inc. The item tonight is the actual agreement that the parties would recommend being enforced if the voters approve this in the general election in the fall. The only term that's different from what we had spoke to at your last workshop was that staff was able to continue negotiations with Epcor, and instead of a 2% franchise fee, we increased that to 3%. So that was a significant difference. It plays well for the city and for our partner relationship with Epcor. I'm here to answer any questions you may have about it, but this would be the actual agreement, and it's important that before we take something to the voters, that we know we can come to an agreement, and that's what this represents.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, speaker cards?
No, sir.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on item 28, please?
Yes, Mayor. I move the authorization to enter into a franchise agreement with Epcor Water, Arizona, Incorporated, for water and wastewater services.
Second.
Councilmember Hugh made the motion, Councilmember Tomachoff seconded it to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Request for a future workshop and executive session, can I get such an animal?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move that we hold the next regularly scheduled city council workshop on Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020, at 12:30 PM in the Civic Center, 5750 West Glen Drive, Glendale, Arizona, to be followed by an executive session pursuant to ARS 3843103.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by our Vice Mayor and seconded by Councilmember Clark. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any votes, please say nay. Appears the ayes have, do have what that motion carries. Moving on to council comments and suggestions. Councilmember Aldama, do you have anything?
I do, thank you, Mayor. During these turbulent times, I want to reaffirm to our Glendale PD how much I appreciate you for all the things you do keeping our community safe. You are valued more than, than you'll ever know, and you are a significant part of my prayers for you and your family while you're out there serving this great city. So I want to thank you, and thank you for all the times that you've attended our Thanksgiving dinners in the district here. Thank you for visiting our children during Christmas and handing out toys. Thank you for visiting our children during Christmas and handing out toys. Thank you for playing basketball in the park with our kids. Thank you for all the great things that a lot of our citizens and those from the outside of the city don't ever get to observe, but I've observed it on many bases and many times. So I want to thank our chief and thank all of our policewomen and men for the service you provide to our citizens and visitors. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I keep holding off having a district meeting because of COVID. If I wait for COVID any longer, we'll never have another district meeting. So I've decided to hold a virtual district meeting, and that will occur on Thursday, June 25 via Facebook, and it will begin at 6 o'clock. If any district resident has a question that they would like answered at that virtual meeting, please contact my council assistant, S. Beck. That's S.B.E.C.K. at glendalearizona.com. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachov?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to reiterate my support for the Glendale Police Department. I think like the rest of you, I've received phone calls, quite a few phone calls, not too many emails, about our police department, and I couldn't be prouder of the Glendale Police Department. We have a great police department, we've got great leadership in our department, and I have a lot of confidence. Our officers have a heart to serve this community, and I just want to thank them. These are turbulent times, but I want them to know that they have my support, and I know they know they have the support of the rest of the council. And I want to thank staff for getting an extra 1% on that Epcor deal. That's pretty awesome, so thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to join in the comments of Councilmember Tomachov and Councilmember Aldama and their appreciation, throw my in there as well for our terrific police department. I don't know how other communities can consider defunding. I'm glad that we're unified here, that we're not going to be doing that in our community. And in fact, we're, if you think about it, in the last several weeks, we're taking steps to do in our community, things over and above that help make our community better, safer, and stronger, things like, like improving our parks, and putting about a bond election for us to be able to do that, and also, like in this budget at the behest of Councilmember Aldama, that we're beginning the youth after-school programs at our, at our community centers for our kids. That's the way you invest in your community and make a difference in public safety, and make the job easier for our police, to where they're not expected to just mitigate what else is out there in the community just by showing up. We need to do it in our community, and these are two examples of how we do. We need to invest more in our community to make it even better than it is. So thanks to our PD and also to my fellow council members. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, would like to recognize and thank our public safety employees for all that they do for the city of Glendale. And especially tonight, I'd like to also recognize Mayor Wires for his effort in developing the memo that went out that this entire council signed on to, to explain our position on this issue that has come up about defunding police. And I just want to thank you, Mayor, for leading that role.
Thank you. And I'm not going to beat a dead horse, because I don't have anything against horses, but I'm very proud of the entire council for literally signing on to that letter. I didn't hear any pushback or anything else, it was just, everybody said, yeah, it's the right thing to do. So I want to thank all of you for signing on it. I felt that really represented our city very well. This morning, I'm driving down the road, and I've got a Glendale officer next door to me. As he's driving alongside me, he's actually standing back there waving at me as we were driving down the road. So we appreciate everything that you guys do on a daily basis, so thank you so much for what you do. It doesn't always get said, but I guarantee you, we're all thinking about it. Thank you so much. With that, next on the agenda is the citizens' comments. Council makes the opportunity available to our citizens to bring information and business before the council that's not on the printed agenda. Now, our council can only act on matters that are on the printed agenda, but may refer the matter to the city manager for the follow-up. If you're unable to speak from a podium, let us know, and we'll make sure that we get a microphone to you. I have two speakers. I'd like Mr. Demskey, sir, we called you in first, so you can be ready to go. Podium's right here.
Good to see you.
My name is Bill Demskey, residing in Swarle District. I've been at Glendale City Council meetings many, many times over the years complaining about seven lying Glendale cops who should have been fired a long time ago. I repeatedly told Chief St. John I would pay for a polygraph test to prove that these seven lying malcontents don't belong in uniform on the Glendale Police Department. I honestly believe, I honestly believe that the vast majority of the good policemen in Glendale have a duty to weed out their fellow bad cops. The Minneapolis cop who murdered George Floyd had over 18 complaints filed against him, and yet he was still on the streets waiting to murder somebody. Two words, why is this happening? The brotherhood. No cop wants to go against any other cop and file a complaint. The professional standards board is the biggest fraud and hoax in the city of Glendale. I made complaints about what happened to me three different instances, and the professional standards investigations were perfect examples on how extensively bad cops will lie to protect each other's butts. In the investigation of one incident, there were seven cops giving seven different versions of what transpired, and none of them told the story. One incident and seven different stories. I firmly believe the bad cops get carried away with, I put my life on the line every day when I'm in uniform, and I get to do whatever I want to do, whether it's being a racist or a murderer, and the professional standards board will back me up. The latest United States Bureau of Labor Statistics ratings for the most dangerous occupations in the United States has logging workers number one, policeman number 13, and firemen 15 as the most dangerous jobs. This perverse attitude that there are no bad cops because they put their lives on the line every day for our citizens is total insanity. This sorry story goes on today with the recent murder of a jogging African American by a retired Georgia cop. The Glendale city manager declared recently that, quote, "I take full responsibility for every Glendale city employee." He can start by weeding out the bad cops on the department and appoint a citizen investigation committee instead of the fraud professional standard board. Last year, on national TV news, videos of two Glendale cops were broadcast nationwide. One cop was tasing a man 11 times in his groin as the man was entangled in his auto seatbelt. The other video showed another Glendale cop beating a man bloody on the head with his taser gun. Relatives in Chicago called me-
Wrap it up, sir. Thank you. Mr. Dibler.
I am James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona, Arizona, in the Phoenix Council District 5. I noticed that cases of COVID-19 are increasing in the state of Arizona. In the city of Glendale and Peoria, since the Arizona State Home Order of COVID-19 expires on May 15, there has been an increase of COVID-19 cases rising at work speed in recent days. The Phoenix Metropolitan hospitals are starting to get full, so patients cannot to get accepted to the ICU. On a multiple, on a multiple day, many individuals decided to go to Lake Placid to enjoy their summer vacation without wearing their masks outside. The older individuals at the nursing homes are starting to get sick from the virus. I encourage people to wear their face masks outside and hand gloves to reduce this spread of COVID-19. Finally, I would like the city of Glendale to partner with Glendale Community College to hold drive-through graduations at GCC. The addresses at GCC will not miss the graduations due to COVID-19. There will be social disney, disney at the drive-through graduations. The drive-through graduation will start from 59th Avenue, Glendale Avenue, to 59th Avenue and all of it at Glendale Community College. Finally, we will get through this together, Mayor will go stronger and better. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Dibler. So there being no further business before this council tonight, I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting with no objection from this council, hearing none in this meeting. Thank you.[1418.23]